Order, everybody stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take the roll.
O'Connor.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Alms.
Here.
DeZeele. Weber.
Here.
Atkins Hoggitt.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
All right. Comments and suggestions from citizens present? This is the point in the agenda where people can come up and give us their opinion on anything they would like except for things that are on the agenda tonight. And just so people understand, if you are here for any agenda item, we traditionally allow comments when that item comes up on the agenda. So, are there any comments from citizens present? Any comments? Any comments? Any comments? Hearing none will close that portion of the agenda. Consent agenda.
Consent agenda items for tonight's meeting are as follows. Minutes from the regular and special council meetings of June 17, 2019, and the July 9, 2019 special council meeting. Claims in the amount of $1,326,274... Oh, $326,274.48. Approved the special event permit application submitted by the Hudson Area Chamber of Commerce for the Spirit of St. Croix art festival located at Lakefront Park for September 28 to 29, 2019. Approved the temporary beer wine license for the Spirit of St. Croix art festival event. Approved the registration application submitted by the Hudson Area Chamber of Commerce to sell at a community event. Approved the temporary wine license application submitted by the Visual Arts Council for the member spotlight event to be held at the FIP Center for the Arts on August 1, 2019. Approved the temporary operator license applications submitted by Glorita Adrian and George Moore for August 1, 2019. Approved the operator license applications as listed on the issue sheet. Approved the taxi license renewal for Magina SMV Transport for the licensing year beginning July 16, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Approved the taxi driver's license application submitted by Robert Mavilla and Jerry Matijka for the licensing period of July 16, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Approved the issuance of a second-hand article dealer license to Eco ATM LLC. Approved the renewal second-hand article dealer mall flea market license to the Old Coin Shop located at 521 Second Street. Approved the special event application submitted by Run Still Water Inc. for the Gopher to Badger event scheduled for August 10, 2019 from 5:30 a.m. to noon at the Lakefront Park contingent upon items listed on the issue sheet. Approve a budget amendment to transfer $15,000 from unreserved funds to cover expenses incurred with the SCADA project. Approve a budget amendment of $33,620 from unreserved funds to cover expenses incurred for the 2019 sewer rate study. Award the contract to Albright Sun Excavating Inc. in the amount of $126,058 for the 2019 storm sewer repairs. Approve a certified survey map for 499 County Road A Extraterritorial Zone, town of Hudson, Lorraine Jacobs, William and Cheryl Wilbys. Approve a utility easement release at 2700 Harvey Street, HP Group LLC. Approval of a conditional use permit application for construction in a stormwater easement area at St. Croix County Tax Parcel 236-1944-04-000. Joel LaVenture.
Please pull that one.
Approval of the final development plans for the redevelopment of the Hudson Golf Clubhouse at 201 Carmichael Road, St. Croix View Partners LLC. Approval of a quick claim deed for 205 Third Street, Richard and Cheryl Sherry.
The other items have been pulled to T and W.
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Vote to approve.
Second. Motion, second to approve, roll call.
Morissette.
Yes.
Alms.
Yes.
DeZeele. Weber.
Yes.
Atkins Hoggitt.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Motion's approved. Item S, approval of a conditional use permit application for construction in a stormwater easement area at St. Croix County Tax Parcel 236-1994-04-000. Joel LaVenture. Jim?
Initially had some concerns about putting anything in our storm ponds areas because we have such a mixed bag of the way those are being dealt with. And MS4 now requires that we manage this. So, but that has been addressed to my satisfaction. My concern now is at the plan commission meeting, the developer stated they were going to dredge the pond out and use that fill as the base for their building. And I have serious questions, I'm not a soils engineer, about using muck from the bottom of a pond as a base for a building. So, I'm not sure who needs to address this, but it seems like it's... The design may be... I would question the design for the... Using that material for that building. So, in which case it means it's going to have to be dispersed, it's going to have to be removed and disposed of.
Is Mr. LaVenture here?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to answer that? Mike, did you have anything to say first?
No.
Okay.
I'm Doug Zoller. I am land surveyor with Oth Consulting, and I've been working with Joel on this plan along with our civil engineers. So, what was the question, excuse me?
My question was, is digging, putting a base of four foot of swamp mud, is that going to be sufficient to maintain that building? It doesn't strike me that we would allow a building to be built like that anywhere else.
We haven't done any soil tests out there, but my guess is there's top soil on the bottom of this pond, but below that, there will be probably sand and stuff that we can use for the building.
And decayed vegetation. That pond's been...
Obviously, we don't want to use any of that because it's going to put a building on top of it.
Yeah. So, how do we... How will you know? I don't want to... I don't want you to put a building out there that in five or 10 years, the foundation is going to crack, the floor is going to crack, that's...
Right. Nobody wants that.
And we'll end up with something that we're going to have to get you to remove or repair.
No. If we can't find suitable soils there onsite, we'll have to truck them in then, I guess. But we'll still have to excavate out an equal amount because we don't want to make the capacity of that storm pond any smaller than it is.
Exactly. No, it's a good idea, but I really am concerned about it.
We were just taking the fill for the driveway.
Identify yourself again, please.
Joel LaVenture. We were just going to take the fill for the driveway portion and not the building site alone. You know, we only have to go up, what, eight inches, Doug, to get to the 100-year mark? So, we were just going to use fill out of the storm pond for the driveway. So, we didn't add any fill in the bottom where the driveway is going to be, but up on the top, yes, we would probably have to bring in some fill for that. Am I correct?
Yeah. So, to clarify that, the portion of the pond bottom, we will put fill on, and that's to get across it with the driveway. Other than that, the portion where his building is going to go is right now above the 100-year storm elevation, and so we're going to fill a couple feet there to make the building pad and stuff. And obviously, we want to use good material because he's putting a building on it.
Right.
That wasn't quite what I heard at the plan commission meeting. I thought maybe I misunderstood it.
Right. That was a little unclear at the plan commission meeting.
Okay.
And there won't be a basement on this?
No. Nope. This is just a storage facility, so it'll be a slab.
Is there a motion?
One more question is, Mike Johnson, do we monitor that then? Is that our responsibility, or...
Yeah. Building inspections would, you know, if there's a question, they're going to require a soils analysis or a report of some sort.
Okay.
At the time of the issuance of the permit.
Thank you. Move to approve.
Second. Motion, second to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motions approved. Approval of the specialized transit planning study agreement with West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, the WCWRPC. How are we doing?
Good. So, what was your questions about this?
Well, we had taken it off because a funding source had not been identified for this.
Oh.
And that's the only reason.
Okay. $13,000 is what the proposed scope for this project is, assuming that would come out of the Community Development Apartments Fund. The Community Development Apartments Fund. That's about it. Do you need a summary on it?
No, I think we're good. It was consent, anyway. Everybody good?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, second to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motions approved. Thanks, Tiffany. Approved the vendor change and upgraded door system at the police department. Kathy?
Well, finance authorized...
Twenty-six.
$26,000 from the unreserved funds, I believe, but they... More work needs to be done on the contract, so it's... The money's allocated, but the contract and source are not approved yet because we haven't been able to contact the CWC or CWS about their contract, and it wasn't adequate.
So, the motion... So, the motion is just to allocate the money and then...
Yes.
Okay. Pending contract.
Correct.
So, moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motions approved. Discussion of possible action on ordinance 11-19 preliminary development plans and a zoning map amendment from AR Agricultural Residential to PRD 3. Planned residential development at St. Croix County Tax Parcel 020-1085-30-000, The Heart Development LLC. Anything you want to say on this?
Yes, we need to amend the ordinance numbers. This would be the second reading for ordinances 8, 9, and 10. They were not numbered at the time that the packets were put together, so the first reading was June 17, 2019, so this would be the second reading for all three ordinances.
I think we're all pretty familiar with this. This is the fourth rendition, I think, from where we started. A quick recap on that. The first application included a five-story mixed-use building on the north pad for the apartments, which is roughly in the center of the site. And then the other building was a four-story senior living facility. The second rendition included two four-story apartment buildings. The third one went to two three-story residential buildings that were more L-in shape. And then, most recently, the... What you have in front of you is one four-story mixed-use building on the north apartment site, and then one three-story building on the south. So, everything else in the plan remained the same outside of the fact that the commercial lots went from six to five. Otherwise, there are 43 single-family homes along the west side of the property. Obviously, a number of concerns from the public specific to the building height, density, traffic, pedestrians, bikers, kids. Had a lot of good discussion. There's a lot of people here today that probably want to be heard again. I know the applicants here as well. So, with that, I'll turn it over for questions. I think, like I said, I think everybody understands what the project is at this point. We also have the traffic engineer here as well as Dave Schofield.
Mike, have we talked or had any discussions outside of the neighborhood, folks, about the traffic and as far as the infrastructure? At what point that would start? At what point would we get a plan to see what that looks like?
I received a draft LOE from SEH to conduct the preliminary design of Carmichael from Cooley to Vine just this past week, so reviewing that...
Preliminary, are there... Go ahead.
So, that would get us to a point where we're starting the design process of what that would look like. We have a rough idea of what that would look like when we did the Carmichael Road corridor study, but that would, you know, provide a significant...
So, what kind of traffic taming or safety things are there, or are they not?
I mean, I don't think for Carmichael...
I don't want to give you a big, long discussion about engineering yet, but I want to make sure that we've identified the fact that we're going to have some type of safety mechanism on Vine and Diamond, and that further on down, we're going to address the issue of over or under, how we get people safely across Vine Street, period.
Specific to Vine?
Yeah.
Nope. We aren't there yet.
Okay.
I'd like to, Randy, along those lines. I've been thinking about a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we postpone further action on this project at council level until the traffic congestion on both Vine and Carmichael is addressed. That means a solid plan in place with funding, timing. We know when... We know what's going to happen. And I think that's what I was hearing you say, we need to know. And specifically, that bike and ped safety along Vine and Carmichael, that particularly extends to all of our schools and to the YMCA. That covers that area, that we're looking at that as part of this project.
Kind of timeframe are you looking at? Because this could be first reading.
This could be what?
First reading.
Oh.
It's an ordinance change for zoning.
Oh.
I guess, to what extent do you want, you know, I mean, a commitment in terms of funding? 50% design? You know, what are we...
We need to see the design. Funding, we can figure that out once we get to that point.
Point of order, that... I just made a motion. We either need to...
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, all right. So...
Now, discussion continue.
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah. You know, I'm... I think that maybe the Safe Roots to School Committee should be brought back together or something like that in order to make sure that the safety of the schoolchildren going to the grade school and the middle school, and then as well as the high school.
I hope I'm not speaking out of school here, but my wife, Marion, is part of that group, and I think this extends well beyond the scope of all they do. They should be involved.
But I think they... Yeah, exactly. I wasn't expecting them to take over this or anything. But I think that they should be involved in it.
That would make sense to me. But I guess I'm looking now for discussion on the impact of... I don't want to see this moving ahead until we know what we're doing and that we're committed to this thing because it's a big deal. And we can't back... I'm really concerned that once we move down this trail, if we were... We might do things that can't be fixed.
What's your motion to postpone till when?
Postpone until we have a plan in place, a satisfactory plan in place for Vine and...
Put a timeframe?
Carmichael. For what it said was congestion on Vine and Carmichael has been significantly addressed, and that particularly looking at bike and ped safety, that extends to the three schools and the YMCA.
Can't you put a timeframe on it, or do you want that? I want to do the prudent thing, Mike, and do it to where we're addressing the issues while on a parallel path to getting something that can fit up there. We all know that the comprehensive plan said, so we need to move that progress forward.
I defer to the engineers in terms of the timing and how long it would take for us to work through a Vine concept and Carmichael. I'm not... I just...
Recognize that's extending beyond the Vine and Carmichael intersection. We're talking, you know, about what you talked about, just the Carmichael to Cooley is only... Between Cooley and Vine is only a portion of that.
So, we have to go back and amend our LOE to expand the scope of what that would look like.
I think, you know, obviously, I'm not prepared to...
Glenn?
I'm Glenn Van Warmer, driving engineer from SEH. And I don't have a timeline set up for this because it's kind of a new thought. We've been working on the Carmichael corridor study on a concept for... Well, since it started. So, we have a pretty good concept of what's needed. So, what we need to do is get into the conceptual design where we understand widths that are needed right away that may be needed, where the turn lane should go, you know, all the safety features so that we can incorporate it into a concept design. That's going to take more than a couple of months. We also want to look at Vine Street. And to really address Vine Street, we need to get a little bit of information on the pedestrian volumes at Diamond and the traffic volumes with the school. So, we can't do any counts to get the good information until the school is back in session and Vine Street is back open and we get the traffic pattern back. So, that's going to push it into October or November. So, it's probably going to be more than a few months before we can get all the information together. We've got some pretty good basic ideas on trails and sidewalks and how they should be connected, but we have to put it into a plan, and we have to understand how it's going to fit. It's kind of like what we did with Manly Road, you know? We had a concept, and we had to put it on plans before we really knew that it was going to fit and work. To answer your question a little bit?
Randy's question about timing is... That's what you were looking for, right, Randy?
Yeah. It seems a little long, Glenn. What, are you taking a vacation, or what?
No. As I tried to explain, we can't manufacture information on the impact of the new Vine Street or the school traffic or the number of pedestrians. So, we need to do that. So, Vine Street is kind of pushing it into October or November. We could speed up the process to come up with all the information for Carmichael, but we still have the Vine Street part, so that's why I think we're talking October or November to get the final answer. I'd like to do it faster, but I want to do it right because you're going to live with this for a long time.
I'll be on you, too. Mike, is... We're only approving zoning, right?
The concept master plan. So, what would the next step would be, let's say, if it were to be approved? They'd have to come in with a preliminary plat and master or final master development plan, which would be more specific and precise than what you have right now. So, right, this is kind of like the more global general development plan look. When you get to the next step, then you're looking at grading some specific elevations, things like that, and that's done through a CUP with a public hearing at plan commission and then obviously ultimate approval.
So, how far out would that go?
If it went forward tonight?
First reading tonight. Or, yeah, you could say if we approve the zoning.
It's hard. You know, it would go into, I think we were in, you know, if you look at it, probably October, November-ish.
Would you build through... Would you guys end up building through the winter?
You'd need to come up to the mic, please.
Greg Johnson with Heart Development. I think it'd be challenging just because there's so much earth movement and whatnot that would need to be done. I don't know that that could really happen in November. You know, our timeline was, when we started this earlier this year, was just try to get through this approval process with the hope that we'd be able to get in this fall to start moving some dirt, put in some of the preliminary infrastructure, and really be ready for next year is what our hope was. We also have some timelines, obviously, with the seller that we're trying to be as, you know, efficient as we can on our end, too. Thank you.
So, realistically, the development, we would have the design for the roads and the traffic counts by the time winter came, realistically, common sense. So, true construction won't start till next spring.
Yeah. I think that's what he's saying, yeah.
I'm not sure what kind of delay, Jim, if we don't do what harm it would do to either approve the zone request or first reading with the timeline that I think they've laid out.
We've done them. Didn't we do the first reading on all of these?
Yes. The first reading was June 17. It's just renumbered.
My bad.
It's okay.
Second reading.
I'm not convinced. I, you know, we've talked about Vine and Carmichael for as long as I've been on the council, and you've been on it longer than I have. And this issue, if we don't pull the trigger on Vine and Carmichael now, we're going to live with it for a long time.
I don't differ with you whatsoever on that part.
And I want to make sure that that is, you know, that it gets done.
But why... To me, I think we could do, run a parallel course here. That's my thought. Because I won't approve anything or vote for anything myself unless there are the safety concerns on both Vine and Carmichael are met, period.
Right.
And I've said that all along.
But if we approve the development, then they're going to... Which basically is what we're doing, and they're going to start investing more money. And if we can't solve the problems that 4,300 additional vehicles coming into Vine-Carmichael...
But irregardless, Jim, if they develop it or somebody else comes in, we will still have to address that issue of those two roads. And right now, we have a developer with a concept in hand. We are addressing or trying to address the issue of traffic and safety. I don't understand why we couldn't have a parallel plan. I'm not saying, you know, push the plan through. We're giving it the time and the thought on both the safety and how that... Those two roads are going to fit the best with development, so...
So, if we approve this, what's on our agenda right now? What is the developer allowed to do on that property now or in the near future?
They would still have to go through the conditional use permit, the final master plan, preliminary plat, they'd have to subdivide it, and the final plat. So, all those things have to happen still.
So, they really wouldn't be able to get anything done? I mean, he was talking about starting to prepare things. What kind of preparation? What does that mean?
So, I think to get to at least... Generally, you can see some grading happen after preliminary plat, but again, for somebody to actually build the roads and do the sewer and do the lots, you have to have the ground platted and file development plan approval.
I guess I don't see the harm in that. We're still have the decision of making what it ultimately looks like.
And that happens after we see the traffic, is what I'm hearing. And potentially the safety solution.
I'm sorry, I'm not...
I'm just confirming that that next point of vote would happen after or around the same time as when we see the traffic and the safety solution to Vine and Carmichael.
That's possible. I... But I think this is the time to say it is going to happen and that we're not going to take action until we have resolved our issue. We can't take action until... And I just don't want to see it moving ahead and against a solution that we don't have.
Jim, they're part of that solution with a big chunk of money, so it would offset our costs as well.
That's... They're not offsetting any... They're going to do what they're going to do. That's not going to offset any other costs that we have on Vine and Carmichael, so...
$1.5 million is not going to help us?
Randy, that's all being... They're built... That money is going into things they have to do anyway.
No. No.
They're handing us a check for a million and a half dollars to spend the way we want?
More or less.
I haven't seen that. I've seen it going to the infrastructure that has to be placed, has to be changed in the city. I haven't seen that they're going to give us a million dollars and a half and...
Let Nick explain.
That we spend the way we want.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nick Vivian, on behalf of the project with Greg Johnson. With respect to the million and a half, it's actually $2 million, a million and a half to the transportation improvement. So, you've told us exactly what needs to be done. It's not as though we even have the luxury of saying, here's a million and a half. You've told us, you've studied the traffic, you've looked at all the sites, as Mr. Van Warmer has said, you've studied the Carmichael corridor for years and years on end. And to that end, when you look at the traffic numbers coming out of this development, you know, the concern that you're going to have to deal with the impact of the development without a solution. So, what you did as we started this process, when we started to talk with your staff, is you did a capital cost study. The city did a capital cost study. And it said, to accommodate this development, here's what we need you to do. We need to... We need you to pay us effectively 1.5 million dollars to install these transportation improvements so that we can handle the traffic that will come out of this development. So it's not as though we have the luxury of saying, here it is, do what you want with it. It's, you've identified that the need. We've said, yes, we'll contribute to the need and yes, we'll agree to pay that, that $2 million. But beyond that, you know, I want to make a comment about, you know, how this is structured. In a lot of cases, developers come in and they plan to do all the engineering for the site and all the engineering for the transportation improvements. What we've talked about here with staff is that this intersection is so vital and so important that we're not going to design the transportation improvements. You're going to design the transportation improvements. And so while we're paying for your engineers to design Vine and the improvements that are installed on Vine, and we're paying for the design of Carmichael and the improvements, it's your staff, it's your consultants that are actually engineering these improvements. So we're on the hook for the costs, but you control what gets engineered and you control what ultimately will be the design of Vine for this piece and Carmichael for this piece. Now, included in the transportation improvements are some traffic calming measures already because that's what your engineers have said need to be completed. You have a signal on Carmichael, which is part of your overall Carmichael transportation plan. So you will have one light that's installed. You have no other lights down Carmichael. You will need lights and they will need to be paid for. This development will pay for that light across from Faith Community Church. You have other lanes that will need to be installed that this development will pay for and you will design those improvements. And so I'd urge the council, I understand that it's challenging to sit here and say we need an answer to everything before we move forward. We have relied in good faith on your process. We've relied in good faith on your engineers. We've relied in good faith on all of the numbers that the city has presented as part of this process. We've relied on that process in good faith. And we're here with a plan that takes into account those concerns. We've talked since February about the bed shed plan. We've worked with staff to move the trail a couple of times to put it in a place that provides that north-south corridor that keeps walkers and bikers off of Carmichael. We've worked with sidewalks. We've worked with connections up to Diamond. We've worked on sidewalks on the other side of Vine Street. I understand that there's a desire to globally design the entire area with the elementary schools, the middle schools, all of the infrastructure that you want to connect. When you look at this plan, we are doing everything that we can within this development to make sure that you have a development that is connected to your infrastructure outside of this development. We can't design the infrastructure outside of the development, you know, other than what you're telling us we need to do as part of this process. What we can do is we can design all the connections and we can design through the development so that it makes sense. So I would urge the council to not support the motion. I would urge the council instead to run a concurrent process. As has been said, this is only zoning. This is zoning to the point that your comprehensive plan and your future land use map have envisioned. And it's approval of this particular preliminary concept map. You have complete control over the final development plan. You have complete control over the conditional use permit, which will be far more specific in nature on all of the performance requirements. It will require another public hearing, so all the folks can come back and comment on the specific details. You have complete control over the preliminary plat and the final plat. This development has a long way to go in order to see final approval. We've invested a lot to get to this point. We've worked with staff cooperatively and we're not even to the midpoint of the development. And to stop, to say, now we want to think a little bit more about globally master planning this part of the city, would be a real challenge for the development of this site. But, you know, more than that, we're trying to continue to work cooperatively and we're trying to keep the Atwoods engaged, we're trying to keep the developer engaged, and we think we can do that on a concurrent path. So given that there's a lengthy process with lots of control on the city's part ahead of this particular issue, I'd urge you to consider that concurrent path so that we can continue to develop our process and looking at the CUP and the plating, and you can continue to master plan and make sure that these connections are where you want. And if they're not, approve a different structure in the final development plan. Approve a different layout in the plat. Tell us what you want to move forward with more of a global master plan if this doesn't fit the vision of the city. But don't stop the process where it's at because it presents real challenges to the owner of the property, it presents real challenges to the developer if we stop and say, we're going to wait until some point in the future when the city is ready to go with a master plan. So I would urge you to consider running this on concurrent paths. I hope you can support the rezoning and the concept of the map, knowing that you have significant control moving forward.
Well, Randy, I did not hear that we're getting a million and a half dollars to spend on any way we want.
Right, he said two.
Two million. That's being done, and basically, that money goes to allow traffic to move in and out of this development. It does nothing for Vine and Carmichael. All it does is make it easier, a little safer for that development to be there. We still have 4,300 or whatever the number is, something like that, passenger trips that are going to occur on, that are going to go out in this street area that's already congested.
It does do things to Vine and Carmichael.
They're pretty minor. You know, a little going around the corner on Vine, getting maybe a straight headshot. So, but it's still pretty minor. It helps Carmichael a little bit, doesn't do a thing for bike ped, nothing. This whole thing makes bike ped even more dangerous than any place in the city, except perhaps Exit 2. So I, there's just, there are things that we have to look at really in depth and come up with some creative solutions because the standard stuff isn't going to work here. You can't put a roundabout there and think you're going to have bike ped safety. Roundabouts are more dangerous for bike ped than regular intersections.
And this plan allows us to have the ability to, if we want, to have a roundabout, but doesn't say we have to have a roundabout.
Right.
You know, we could, you know...
That's certainly one of the obvious solutions for managed traffic movement, but it doesn't do anything for bike ped. And you have to look at where we're at, you know, there's, how many, within a half a mile, there are what, 4,000 or 5,000 kids going to school?
Yeah.
So it's a huge, huge intersection of issues.
I agree. I'm not trying to, you know, currently you have a situation where kids are walking out, people are walking on the shoulder on the north side of Vine. You know, what they're proposing is essentially rebuilding an entire section of that Vine Street, which would include a trail with a barrier curb, right?
Right, right. But you can't cross Vine.
Well, they would cross, they'd bring in the sidewalk to Diamond, you know, that's where the thought would be at that point.
You think that's really, that's not a real solution? I mean, reality is, they're going to cross Vine up by closer to Carmichael. That's, kids going to the middle school, kids going to the elementary school are not going to go to Diamond and up and back and down. You know, that's not going to happen.
Nope, and there's a crossing that they propose at Vine and Carmichael too. You know, I'm just stating what is in their application. You know, I don't disagree with you that that situation is not ideal long-term.
I think the solutions are tough. I really, you know, I've looked at this a lot and I think the solutions are tough. You know, I'm not an expert, but I do know some things about bike safety and about ped safety. So the solutions to this are not your normal things, painting crosswalks, even building, putting in new signs, new flashing lights that actually turn red. That's, I think it's beyond that. So it's going to take some pretty good engineering to make this work.
Jim, you're not saying anything new.
And we're not getting $2 million to do this work.
You're not saying anything new. Everybody's talked about those things already.
Not enough.
No, I agree with Jim and, you know, we've got the districts that are bordering this and we're the ones, I mean, I'm hearing it, I've had all of the correspondence forwarded to the council that I've gotten about this and, you know, that's a continuing theme, the safety of the kids, the congestion at Vine and Carmichael. You know, these are the people that make multiple trips through that intersection of Carmichael and Vine. And so I agree with Jim. I would really like to see a plan fleshed out before we make any changes.
Just in terms of crossings, when you look at how this property lays out and where it's located, you have an opportunity for a crossing at Vine and Carmichael and you have an opportunity to direct traffic back to Diamond, to that crossing. Just by its very nature, where that 40 is, there are no other crossing opportunities directly on that 40. Randy's been a vocal advocate for ensuring safety of kids crossing that road, as have you. And we don't disagree. We don't want to create a dangerous situation for those that will cross Vine. However, our options are relatively limited based upon where that property lies because of that intersection and how people have to cross. That being said, that particular issue is appropriate for a resolution in the conditional use permit because that's where we're talking about the density and that's where we're talking about accesses. We're not talking here about zoning or how the property is being used. I don't, I haven't heard anybody say that our plan is inconsistent with the type of use for the property that we've envisioned for this particular parcel. Rather, what's being voiced are specific concerns as to how do we cross, how do we provide safe crossings, how do we provide safe access? And those issues are best addressed on a health, safety, welfare level where you're addressing your conditional use permit to say, this is how this property will function. This is how traffic will flow. This is how the crossings will work. And so I'd ask the council not to get mired in the specifics of how this will operate because the question before the council is, how should this property be used from a land use and zoning classification? And how does this lay out with five commercial lots, two apartment buildings and some single family residences? You've heard from Mike, you've heard from others, we can't do anything, we can't operate on that zoning scheme until there's actually a permit in place and that, until you give us a go-ahead. But the question isn't those details. Those details are important and we're going to be champions of safety as well, but that discussion comes in the form of the conditional use permit application and that discussion. So I'd ask you to really focus on what's at hand here in terms of zoning and in terms of a concept so that we can get to the point in working in collaboration and working in conjunction with one another to figure out those specific questions to make this development operate properly.
And my concern is that if you, if we allow you to move ahead with the concept, you have more money invested and we still haven't resolved our issue and that we may say, this doesn't work. We can't make this work. We can't make this safe. It's going to cost us another $2 million to put a bridge over Vine and Carmichael. So there are just some really huge unknowns here for the city that I'm concerned about and allowing you to, if we, we basically, I guess I would like to, let me back up. My next bit is to talk about the plan itself. So, and that, you're not going to find that to your liking either. It's going to be, I'm going to recommend some different direction. But I want to make sure that this, and Randy, we really haven't talked about safety in this, in this audience. We have, I know you guys in the Plan Commission have done, had some thoughts about it, some discussions, but it hasn't been an issue that we've talked about here that I'm, remember being a party to. It's mostly been about, so far, it's been about the development concept. And it is a global issue and we cannot take this little bit of it and say, oh, now we've got this 40-acre development here and that's going to manage and drive what we do? We need to manage and drive this.
If you guys were to vote for Jim's, to me, you're throwing away an additional $2 million that could help us fix the problem up there.
Yes, but it's to the motion.
I just want to add, yes, I have a question about...
If you would, come up to the mic, please. The motion is to delay.
I have a question about the zoning. Is that related?
Motion is to delay.
To delay rezoning?
Postpone the decision.
Right, this would, I'll go for it. My question is, if you approve, move forward with approving the zoning, does that not say how much density is going to be allowed, which would then have a direct effect on how many people would live there and how much traffic and pedestrian traffic there would be? Is that not what the zoning would allow? Like, that's something that they could go back on?
Currently, the motion is to postpone. If the motion were to succeed, then we would postpone any further discussion on this. If the motion does not prevail, then I presume there would be a motion to approve the rezoning, at which point that would be relevant.
So yes, is what I gathered from that. They couldn't go back on reducing density at a later time if it's approved? Yes.
Right. You know, as you explain that, and perhaps my motions are in reverse order, because I have, my next motion will be, will be to take different action on this, basically to send it back to the Plan Commission, it's going to be my next motion. But if I say, stop any action, then that motion goes nowhere. And I don't want this, I don't want this, I want this project, that would be really bad in that we weren't addressing the plan itself. So I wouldn't want to do that. I think we need to move ahead and address that. So perhaps, am I making sense?
Absolutely. I mean, it's your call, Jim, however you want to proceed, I mean...
Yeah. So if my motion goes ahead and succeeds, then we really can't take, we can't provide any direction.
Right. Point at that point.
So do you want to revise your motion?
I would withdraw that motion.
Well, that was a nice discussion, anyway.
Which doesn't mean I can't bring it back in later, but...
Absolutely, absolutely. All right. So we certainly, I mean, we've got the issue in front of us. Is there, is there a motion?
I'm moving to accept a zoning change as requested, running concurrent with the safety traffic study. In all the conditions that were in the issue sheet.
All right. We got a motion, a second. Jim?
I would disagree with that. I was disappointed that there, I thought there was a, there was a new plan, that we were going to limit the height and we were, and actually reduce density, then at a previous Plan Commission meeting, and then all of a sudden, we come back in with the four-story building again, which I don't know the height on, but the numbers I hear are higher than anything in the area. The piece of the comprehensive plan that we seem to be ignoring is that the development should be commensurate or congruent with the area. And a three-story building is very basically close to not being congruent. A four-story building is absolutely other question.
So to, I guess, get everybody up to speed on the four-story building, the, and I don't think the density actually changed, and if it did, I don't think it was by much when we dropped it down to, when the proposal was...
when we dropped it down to, when the proposal was to drop it down to three. The concern that had come to me and that I agree with and reiterated at the Plan Commission, is that when you have a neighborhood that has apartment buildings being added to it, it's been my experience, watching, coming, just coming from my background, watching what happened on the east side of St. Paul, watching with apartment buildings that came in my tenure with the East Side Neighborhood Development Corporation, as well as with the St. Paul Planning Economic Development Department, as well as some of the economic development things that I was involved in when I was in the legislature, my 12 years in the legislature, indicated to me that when you have apartments come into a neighborhood, generally, if there is any part of that neighborhood that is going to go into decline and disrepair, it's going to begin with apartments. And the last thing I want to do is approve a project, a three-story project, any project for that matter, that 20 years from now, we're all going to regret. And there are elements, two apartments, that I've seen that I think work really well to ensure the longevity of a development like that. Underground parking is one, but retail on the ground level is also another. And that's why you see a lot of that. I know it's been said that retail is inconsistent with what we have here in town, but if you look at downtown Hudson, that's just not true, because almost every building we have downtown Hudson, anything that's two stories, has apartments up on top. And it's also consistent with other developments that you see. So, I was the one that introduced that discussion in the Plan Commission, and the Plan Commission was unanimous in agreement that that was probably an accurate portrayal of how things go, and they thought that that would help with the longevity and the future of an apartment building or apartment development on that site. That's how we ended up at four. Density didn't increase by going to four. It's that retail was added to it.
Are there studies that are current that back up that information?
You know what, I honestly haven't seen anything like that recently. I haven't looked. I'm just telling you what my experience has been in economic development. Well, all right, so you can, you might find that amusing, so show me where I'm wrong.
No, I just want, can I say something?
Sure.
Please.
Before she starts, I've got a few more comments here. And the work that you did, I'm not discounting your observations. I'm questioning whether this, your observations are still applicable based on your experiences quite a few years ago. The retail market has changed a lot in this time. There's a big difference between downtown and something in the Carmichael and Vine neighborhood. So, I would really like to see some...
Have you looked at the apartment buildings that we have here in town right now?
I lived in one for a while.
Okay. Well, I think if you go through the neighborhoods that have apartment buildings, I think that you would see that what I'm saying is accurate.
But cause and effect is not necessarily the same.
I don't know exactly what that means.
So, you're saying that if they had had retail with it, that it would be less likely to deteriorate?
I, that's part of it. I'm also saying that generally, when you put apartment buildings up, they're the first things in the neighborhood to go into decline.
Joyce, we all got the articles from the neighborhood.
Yeah, right.
We all read them, I would assume.
Yeah.
There's data that backs the other side as well.
Yeah. Well...
I think that's what he's getting at, and that's what you're getting at.
Yeah.
To say it, we all got the things, we all read it. So, there's both sides to that argument, or the ones you're trying to present.
The bottom line is, I mean, I was trying to answer the question that Jim brought up. Where did four stories come from? That's where it came from. And you can argue that, that's fine. But I mean, that was just answering Jim's question.
I guess I, the footprint has changed on these buildings a couple times. And we're now, before we had a footprint, a single line at six stories, and then it was...
Five.
Well, six stories equivalent, right?
With the...
With the downtown. I'm talking about the height of the building. But then it was reduced to three stories, but it became an L. Now, it's...
Where density stayed the same.
Right. But the density did, yeah, density stayed the same. I thought it went down slightly.
It may have gone down slightly, but I think...
Twenty-three units, I think, a decrease by 20.
Decreased by 20.
20 units from the original proposal.
Okay. So, and that's the new number, this number we're currently at? We have an increased density with the second, this iteration?
No, there's no increase in density there. Is there with the, I mean, it wouldn't...
Hope they both stay there.
I don't know how they would do that unless they decrease the size of the units.
No, and in fact, in fairness to the project, when we came back to the Plan Commission, we came back, we had a four-story plan, and we came back with a three-story plan. And the discussion with the Plan Commission melded the four-story plan with the three-story plan. Greg has indicated that, to the extent that the council prefers two, three-story buildings, the density is exactly the same, and the density is now 20 units less than what it was when we started this process. So, while the footprint is larger, because the buildings are shorter, the density is less, and it's a question for you, really, of whether you want that first floor retail. And in talking with the Plan Commission, by unanimous margin, the Plan Commission said, we want that neighborhood retail to support that community. Now, what does that do? Yes, it increases the height of the building to four stories. But what we've talked about is, we probably don't need almost 40,000 square feet of retail on the first level. And what we probably do is develop retail on the east side at four stories, and then step the building down on the west side to three stories. But what I want to highlight is the fact that we're talking about a plan with boxes on a map at this point. We haven't fully re-engineered those buildings, because we're having this conversation. So, it's not an indictment of the developer to say, we're here with a four-story building. It was a cooperative, collaborative discussion with the Plan Commission to say, we're okay with three or four. We think it'd be cool to have retail in Hudson to service that neighborhood, and we happen to agree with the mayor's comments, that that neighborhood commercial will support that development and support the vitality. But to the extent that the council wants to see two, three-story buildings, Greg is fine with two, three-story buildings. But we do agree with the Plan Commission recommendation that retail commercial, that neighborhood commercial will support that complex.
I'm trying to imagine the...
Go ahead. If you would identify yourself.
Yes, I threw my pen. Jen Harriet, 621 Diamond Drive. Regarding the retail, in downtown Hudson, the reason that retail works so well there is because it is literally built for pedestrian traffic. It's all congested, basically. You get a lot of heavy foot traffic. The retail spaces are small, so they are much more easily to rent. Usually, the rent is lower in buildings like that. In this, when you get out more towards the suburbs and, you know, like this development would be, typically, retail spaces are larger. They require higher rent, and there's not enough foot traffic usually to support them. Even with apartment buildings on top, in many cities all over the Twin Cities, there are buildings where, in downtown St. Paul, there's a building that was built three years ago. The retail is still empty on the first floor, and this is happening all over. And I think empty retail would hurt the value of the development and the area versus not having retail. I think that if you are planning on the basis of fear or the decline of an apartment building, I think that that's poor planning. I think if the development is well-planned, designed aesthetically pleasing, that it can sustain itself without retail on the first level. I think it would be desirable into the future. And then you wouldn't have the risk of having vacant retail sitting. We do have other, obviously, vacant retail and commercial in Hudson already. So, yeah, that's...
Mike, if this motion passes, would that decision be set in stone on the first floor retail by our motion to approve a rezoning tonight?
No, no.
Concept then set in stone?
No.
So, I don't see...
But it is allowed. It's not set in stone.
It wouldn't...
They could come up with a different design.
We are not approving a four-story building that definitely has retail on the first floor. We're not even approving a four-story building.
That's right.
We're approving a zoning change. Right? I just want to be clear.
You are approving a preliminary development plan as presented.
A preliminary master plan, that...
I hope so.
As presented.
So, and that, as presented, it includes the four-story and the three-story. Now, they've expressed a willingness to do either one.
But it's not irretrievable. I mean, it's...
Right. But I don't, don't, I think it's not, you are approving what they have submitted as their preliminary master plan.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying.
Yes, ma'am.
Erin Lakeo, 2238 Ruby Road. I did just want to add that, you know, you would be approving this preliminary plan, and I think it would be in the best interest, if there are concerns, that we address it earlier in the process rather than later, because as we've heard throughout this whole discussion over the past few months, it's been, you know, oh, remember back in February, we said, you said that we could do this. And, you know, they're putting money into making their plans, and we're taking time to decide what we should do. And I think that if we approve this now, as is, it will look as though, yes, we have approved that this is the preliminary plan, and this is the jumping off point of what it's going to look like. And I think that there are issues with what it looks like right now, and it would be in everyone's best interest to save money and save time to discuss what we want it to be like now, rather than later to make changes. Thank you.
Greg Johnson, again. And I'll just reiterate, I think we've been collaborative, working with the city and trying to address a lot of the issues, traffic, density, heights, things like that. And we'll continue to do that. You know, what we are asking for is some affirmative, yes, conceptually, we like the zoning. You know, whether it's a four-story, whether it's a partial four with a three, as you get closer to the residential site, those are all things that we're open for discussion. So, if there's perhaps a way in the motion to say, you know, specifically on the apartments, this is more of a discussion and an ongoing discussion, we're fine with that. We're not asking you to definitively, and then we're going to come back and go, aha, you approved that a month ago. We're just looking for, yes, conceptually, the plan looks good. As Mike, as Nick have mentioned, it's an ongoing, evolving development. So, thank you.
Can I ask you a question? What is the height of that building going to be on the front side?
With the four-story?
Stories.
It would be 55 or less. So, and again, we had looked at, in this conversation, council member just came up, you know, over the course of the last week and a half, you know, I would like to see, as Nick mentioned, we don't see 40,000 square feet of retail being necessary. So, perhaps there's retail on the east side of that one building, and then we actually go from four stories and step it down to three stories. So, visually, you know, you're getting that less impact as you head west in the development. So, again, open for discussion, and as we work through it, we can provide some elevations and some exterior looks, so that, you know, have a neighborhood, another neighborhood meeting and have those discussions, and really have some workshop time with this. So, thank you.
Out of curiosity, I have a more question, too. So, we were looking at a four-story and a three-story. Would that necessarily mean that the three-story has a pitched roof and the four-story has a flat roof?
Not necessarily. I mean, again, I would really rather come to you with some, you know, if we can work, you know, concurrently with this traffic issue. And again, you know, we want to be part of this solution. You know, as far as budgets and studies and expenses, these are expensive things that we're talking about, and we want to be a part of trying to help that. And I think we can do that together. But we need to continue to move forward. Again, you know, I don't speak for Mr. Atwood and the estate, but they also have, you know, some time sensitivity to this as well, and I can't speak to that, but I can tell you what we're here to do. So, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, you guys ready to vote? Sure.
My name is Donna Braille, 2234 Ruby Road. Just a question, if we, if the zoning could be, if you wanted to run the traffic and the zoning request in tandem, like at the time, can the zoning request be approved or denied without the conceptual plan included with it? Because the conceptual plan includes the four-story, which that is not in compliance with the comprehensive plan. So, can you approve the zoning and then have back a different conceptual plan that's maybe more aligned with the comprehensive plan at another date? Or can it be added in with the zoning request, or to approve the zoning change, but not approving this conceptual plan?
Well, we've got a motion on the floor right now, so...
Okay. So, the motion is to approve the change in zoning. Is that an ordinance, then, that we're approving?
Yes.
So, which one is it?
Ordinance 10.
Ordinance 10?
Yes.
Okay.
1019.
1019?
Yes.
Everybody good? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
No.
Motion's approved, three to two.
No, you need four votes.
Oh, you need four on this?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So, a motion is not approved. Thank you for, wish you'd told me that before I sent me that.
Yeah, sorry.
You were running for the book. All right. So, is there...
I move to postpone our next full council meeting.
Second.
Okay. Motion, second to postpone the issue until the next full council meeting. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion's approved. It is, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion, possible action on ordinance 12-19. And we're going to go down the same path on this, right?
What's the...
This would be ordinance nine.
Nine-19?
Yes.
Preliminary development plans and a zoning map amendment from AR Agricultural Residential to PRD III Planned Residential Development and B II General Business. That's Incroy County Tax Parcel 020-1085-20-000, Heart Development LLC.
I'll move to postpone this discussion until our next full council meeting.
Second.
Motion, second to postpone discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion's approved. Approval of bonds in the amount of $250 for Section 234-4 abandonment of vehicles.
Do you need to suspend on that, on this one?
No, this is just, is the chief still here? I believe this is just for the bond schedule. I don't believe it goes into the ordinance.
I move we approve the bond, 234-4.
I'll second.
Motion, second to approve. Any discussion?
Was there a previous bond amount for this? Is this an adjustment, or is this just something new?
Chief, is it?
Maybe we should get the chief up here.
Chief?
The abandonment of vehicle. I believe it is new.
It's new. Okay, so, there wasn't a...
You know, we had the ordinance on the books, but there was no forfeiture assigned to it.
All right. You think $250 is an appropriate amount?
I think so.
Okay.
Okay. Just to get further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Thanks, chief. Discussion, possible action on the police department's recommendation to deny the operator license application submitted by Ryan Deriz or Reyes?
Reyes. So, my recommendation to deny was based upon a felony conviction for manufacturer delivery of THC greater than 200 grams, less than 1,000 grams. Because of the felony conviction and the type of felony conviction is what my recommendation would be.
The conviction was in 2018, is that right?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, and the licensing activity, or licensed activity is dealing with controlled substances, alcohol. And so, that's why it's substantially related to, the conviction has to be substantially related to the licensed activity. That's why it is.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to deny the operator license due to the fact of the... I'll make the motion to deny the operator license due to the fact of the felony conviction of, that has to do with controlled substances.
Second.
Motion is second to deny, discussion?
I just have one question, chief. How much, what's the value of between two hundred and a thousand grams of whatever THC?
It depends. Two hundred grams, probably be...
Trunk full or a suitcase?
Forty-five hundred dollars.
Okay. I'm not familiar. What kind of quantity? Just kind of curious.
Stop explaining.
And did he go through whatever penalties?
He's currently serving his...
His time?
His time, yeah, through community corrections.
Okay, thank you.
He's on probation?
Yes.
For two years, and he hasn't completed that.
Okay, thanks.
So, just to complete the discussion or let, you know, the discussion we had at finance, there's new legislation that requires us to notify him in writing of the reasons for the denial, and he is allowed an opportunity to come in and give evidence on why he feels he's fit to get a operator's license, or he's rehabilitated, whatever kind of mitigating circumstances he chooses to present. So, just, it could happen, it may not happen, but just so you're not surprised, okay?
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion, possible action on, on final development plans and certificate of compliance for Third Street Living, excuse me, at six fourteen and six twenty-third Street, DPB Investment Partnership.
Thank you. The applicant is proposing a twenty-three unit apartment building, which would be located at six fourteen and six twenty-third Street. The construction of this building would require that the two existing homes be razed. The plan includes underground parking with eighteen underground parking stalls, seventeen service stalls. Access would be from the existing private alleyway off of Vine or off of Locust it runs. It'll connect basically what is currently a dead end where the backyards of the two existing homes are. Plan Commission recommends approval with conditions.
I'll move we approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion, possible action on the certificate of compliance and final development plan for St. Croix Meadows redevelopment, Phillips Medicise Phase Two, St. Croix Meadows, two-point-zero addition.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council. My name is Rob Jones with Cedar Corporation. We've been assisting the community development staff here at the city in administering the St. Croix Meadows redevelopment project. Tonight, we're here to consider two zoning actions for Phillips Medicise. They're looking for a certificate of compliance review and approval, and for approval of their development plans, both the concept and the final development plans for their second phase. They're proposing to move forward with their planned second phase on, on their site. This is roughly going to double the size of the, the facility currently under construction. That existing site is about two hundred and twenty thousand square feet. They're looking to put in addition immediately adjacent to that of about two hundred and two thousand square feet. That's going to continue the existing use of the under-construction facility. That use is a technology and research-based manufacturing. That is a zoning use that is permitted with a certificate of compliance in this district. This plan staff feels complies with the master plan of the planned commercial district on which the property is zoned. The Plan Commission reviewed this proposal in their June eighteenth meeting and has made a recommendation to approve the certificate of compliance and to approve the concept and final development plans with conditions. Happy to take any questions.
I'll move we approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion, possible action regarding the role of the EMS Commission during the transition from St. Croix EMS to Lakeview EMS.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This really kind of came up in the last EMS Commission meeting, actually, two EMS Commission meetings prior, where the question was really posed to, they, the group sort of wants to make sure that their role is the same as the role has always been in terms of looking at the data, the run volume, staffing, and that there is not any change to their role as we go through this transition. So, I just kind of wanted to bring this to conversation at council, just to, it's my, it's my opinion that it remains the same because of the function of public safety being integral into that transition period.
So, do you have a motion for affirmation?
Just wanted to approve. Yep, so I would move that we keep the EMS Commission basically on task with, let's see, I'll read it, discussion, I'm sorry. I guess I'd like to move that the EMS Commission remains the same.
The role remains the same.
Same, role remains the same, thank you.
During the transition.
During the transition.
I would second that.
Sorry.
Motion is second, is there a discussion?
I, I have a question.
Yeah.
I have a concern, and it may be unfounded, that, that the city is underrepresented during this transition, that, you know, I just don't know if maybe an additional role for the commission could be to, you know, keep its thumb on that transition, making sure communications are flowing between Lakeview and, and St. Croix EMS. I just want to make sure that everyone's, you know, marching happily forward, as happily as possible, rather than if there's, you know, you know, simple things, contact information for people is, you know, disseminated to everyone, and people are knowing that there's an open door policy and things like that, just something that I think whenever you're going through a change and you have two parties changing, and one is the city, not just St. Croix EMS, but the city is changing, that the city needs representation at all conversations that are going on through the transition, if that makes sense.
So, in each of these commission meetings, we have a discussion around the transition, where we open it up to asking Josh, any kind of questions with the transition, ask the hospital, ask North Hudson, and also I bring stuff. So, are you talking about something that's beyond that?
No, if you feel comfortable that, that the city is well-represented.
I could tell you, John has been invited to public safety as well. He's been at our public safety meetings with Josh, so we are also...
On top of it.
Talking with them, yeah.
Great.
Further discussion?
Were you, I, I interpreted your question a little differently. Were you looking for the EMS Commission to play a more active role in the transition? As opposed to, you talked about having a, perhaps someone from, additional person from the city represented, but...
No, no, I meant that, that the commission is actively representing the city throughout the transition, and I think you confirmed that.
Okay, but I, they're not charged with playing a role in the, in the transition? Am I interpreting that correctly?
They aren't, they're looking to make sure that that is their charge currently.
Okay.
Is the role that it always has been, which is not to get in the midst of what we're doing with public safety.
Advising oversight.
Right. Advising oversight, thank you.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion, possible action to disband the St. Croix EMS ad hoc committee.
Jim, is there any reason to maintain it?
Move to disband the ad hoc EMS Commission.
I'll second.
Ad hoc committee.
Ad hoc.
Careful.
I'll second.
Got a motion is second, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. I don't really have anything, anybody, future agendas, any comments before we pick up?
Future agenda items, and Mike, I don't know how we get this on, the ball rolling for the safety of Carmichael and Vine, so do we direct staff to do that at our next meeting?
I'll have LOE's bring it to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, discussion, possible action on convening into closed session, A, pursuant to Wisconsin Statute, section nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub G, to confer with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, and B, pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub C, to consider employment, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility relating to the City of Hudson, St. Croix EMS employees, and pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub E, to deliberate regarding possible agreements with the St. Croix EMS employees and city administrator where competitive or bargaining reasons require, and C, Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub E, to deliberate regarding negotiating strategy where competitive or bargaining reasons require relating to possible agreement with Village of North Hudson regarding termination of EMS agreement.
Move to go into closed session.
Second.
Motion is second to go into closed session, roll call.
Moore, Sett, Tombs?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Atkins Hoggit?
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Motion's approved, we're in closed session. He said, "Go ahead," so that, that all was recorded live. All right, so we are back in open session. First item, item A, do we have a motion?
Proceed as discussed regarding the foster annexation.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Second item?
Prove that we approve what was discussed in closed session and agreements of St. Croix EMS employees and city administration.
Second.
Got a motion is second, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Third item?
No action.
No action? Okay. Wasn't there a third?
No.
City administrator.
You included city, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, for some reason, I thought we did three contests.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Randy included the city administrator.
I did, because it was on there.
Thank you.
Got a motion is second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved, stand adjourned. Thank you all for hanging in there. Brayden, thank you.